Release the attendee.
Vice Minister Ujifusa, attendee and not a panelist. There she is.
That's not Gary Crosby.
Well, the real Gary Crosby.
It's a much younger Gary Crosby, but he has less hair.
I don't know if I can change my name, but this is the link that I was sent.
No, you're fine.
Hi CJ.
Hi Gary.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you doing?
Good, good.
Identity stuff, that is best. We have.
We have a quorum, but we're missing Andrew and Mark.
Okay, well, we can at least get through the initial portions of the presentation, the show. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our September 16th Town Council Workshop. What we'll do is we'll begin with our pledge of allegiance in a moment.
Republic, one nation, and justice for all.
Thank you all. For those of you participating, either online or if you're online, you obviously have the ability to raise your hand by clicking on the icon. For those of you that are calling in, star six will allow you to mute and unmute your phone. Star nine will indicate that you have a question. When called upon, please state your name and your address for the town. I'd like to begin with our roll call.
Ms. Ujifusa?
Here.
Ms. Abbott?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
Present.
Patson?
Here.
Mr. Kelly? Dr. Ryan? Ms. Ryan?
Here. Thank you all. We'll try to catch up on the other councilors. Before we get started, I would just like to thank Mr. Roberts for being here tonight. It is your birthday. So happy birthday, Mr. Roberts.
Happy birthday, Mr. Roberts.
Birthday.
Yes.
What else would you rather be doing on your birthday evening than coming out?
Thank you for being with us tonight, Ms. Rob. Okay, so what I'd like to do is this is a workshop to discuss our complete street ordinance. We do have a few presenters. First will be Mr. Crosby, our town plan, giving us an overview of our draft ordinance. And then we will begin a presentation from CJ Up and Hazard from ProSmart, who will give us an overview of what complete streets are. So with that, I will be turning it over to Ms. Crosby.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, yes, I will give a bit of an overview on the draft ordinance that I've submitted to you for your discussion. My work on this started in September 2019 with the Town Council Resolution. And I'll read it as follows. Be it further resolved that the Portsmouth Planning Department work with local and regional resources to draft green and complete streets ordinances that require all public and private projects, roads, drives, and parking areas in the town of Portsmouth to construct to green and complete street standards for implementation in Portsmouth in 2020. So again, I began working on this and per the resolution, I restricted myself in gathering resources, I pretty well restricted myself to actual ordinances for form and construction rather than other methods or other ways of advancing complete streets policies. I kept my focus narrow to ordinances themselves. And to be honest, there are few examples. I found some decent examples, but nothing really matched up well with our geography and our demographic circumstance. But I, and using the way we construct our ordinances here, and a couple of, I found a very nice ordinance in Brockton, from Brockton, Mass. A couple from Washington State, of course, the Central Falls Ordinance, and then an ordinance from a much larger city, Albany, New York. So using that, I found that my primary guidance ended up being a Complete Streets Local Policy Workbook published by Smart Growth America and the National Complete Streets Coalition in 2012, updated in 2013, as my primary resource for putting this together. In this workbook, they outline 10 elements that need to be in any kind of policy or ordinance. Of course, a core vision, a vision and a core commitment, an explanation of the users and modes, projects and phases, a significant section on exceptions, and then a whole series of best practices dealing with how to concentrate on entire network instead of small incremental projects, how to deal with or making sure that there is provision in there for dealing with other agencies or jurisdictions that have roadways in our town. There was a good deal of design guidance. A nice piece on context sensitivity, which is basically taking a look at the land uses in the neighborhoods and in the roadways, surrounding the roadways to make sure that you're not doing, you're not allowing for unnecessarily wide roadways or miles of sidewalk that are not used. And then performance measures and implementation steps going forward. So I took all this in and tried to fit it into, translate all of this into ordinance language and constructing it similar to the ordinances that we currently have on the books, which resulted in a total of eight sections in this ordinance. Section one and two, where's my ordinance? Section one and two, taken together, express a purpose for the ordinance and a complete streets policy statement, which tries to lay out, within the confines of an ordinance, tries to lay out the vision and a purpose for why we're doing it. Section three is pretty well standard for most ordinances. It's a series of definitions. Number, section four is applicability. This is what the provisions of the ordinance apply to and not apply to. Section A, section applicability, section A, provisions of this ordinance shall apply to all roadways in the town of Portsmouth. Section, item B, the provisions of this ordinance shall not apply to any private or federally owned roads. And C, the provisions of this ordinance shall not apply to public rights of way owned and maintained by the state. And I list all of the roadways that are maintained by the state in that section of the ordinance. Section five is, this section is what really makes this an ordinance. It starts out with section A, all town-owned transportation facilities in the public rights of way, including but not limited to roadways, intersections, stormwater infrastructure, as well as parking lots on town-owned land, shall be designed and constructed in conformance with the policy that users of all ages and abilities can travel safely and independently. So this says, we must do this. By law, we must do this. We have to. We're going to end up having to change subdivision regs and perhaps other laws and regulations to conform to this if we adopt an ordinance. It also says, there's also a section here that says, if the safety and convenience of roadway users can be improved with the scope of pavement resurfacing, restriping, et cetera, such projects shall implement complete streets of infrastructure. So this is kind of, if it can be done, it shall be done provision in the implementation section. The section, section A, or section B of that implementation section, item B says that we will make good effort to foster partnerships with state of Rhode Island and neighboring communities to develop facilities and accommodations that further the town's green and complete streets policy. I have a reference in there which is wrong. It says it references section 32-210, which was an example. This was a cut and paste that I got. It should be removed, but this, CJ has sent us, in the information I sent you, that CJ had sent me, there is a very good complete streets policy document that has much better language for this section. So I'm going to, we can talk about that later, but I believe that that should be changed. This section eight that I was talking about, I recommend that it be removed as it conflicts with the definition and is addressed in the exceptions section anyway. It conflicts with the definition where it says roadway projects. The definition of roadway projects means the construction, reconstruct, retrofit, maintenance, et cetera, and includes the planning, design approval, and implementation project, except that roadway project does not include repaving that does not alter the roadway geometry and minor routine upkeep such as cleaning, sweeping, et cetera. This section H in the implementation piece of the ordinance, I recommend that we remove because it's inconclusive of that. The next big section is exceptions. This is a section which is universal in all of the ordinances that I have come across, and it's dealt with extensively in this Complete Streets Workshop that I was using for guidance. The exceptions in, and I'll read to you them. The exception in this section are, it says that subject to approval by the Director of Public Works, complete streets infrastructure is not required to be provided when, A, establishment would be contrary to public safety. B, the existing right of way is constrained in a manner that inhibits the installation of cost-effective complete streets infrastructure, such as if the road narrows and we have to end up taking land in order to be able to put this in place or destroying stone walls or any number of things that would constrain the cost-effective installation of complete streets infrastructure. C, there is a demonstrated lack of need. Now, the state has a chapter, Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 2416, Safe Access to Public Roads. And they have a section on exceptions and where they say the cost would be disproportionate to the need or the demonstrated lack of need as determined by factors, data, and so forth that we would gather. So D says there is a demonstrated lack of need as determined by factors, but not limited to. Number D, routine maintenance of the transportation network is performed that does not change the roadway geometry or operation, including but not limited to repaving, striping, sweeping, spot repairs. So if they're out there doing general maintenance of the roadway and repaving that doesn't change the geometry of the roadway, they're not, the town is not required to install complete streets infrastructure. And then finally, implementing complete street standards in a roadway project would create a short section of improvements with problematic transitions on either end or that are unlikely to be followed by similar improvements that either resulting in little progress on the complete streets network. This is one of the things that they stressed in the local policy workbook section is that it doesn't make much sense to have real short sections of complete streets improvement, infrastructure improvement that basically lead to dead ends or difficult transitions to other roadways. And so I put that in there as one of the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 exceptions. The next section is design standards. And you will note that in the, in section two, or section three, where we have definitions, there is a definition for complete streets infrastructure and a list of various kinds of things that can be installed in order to make it roadways user more safe and convenient for all users. And these design standards are national design standards that we can refer to. There's room for flexible, innovative, and balanced approach so that we can keep up with design standards. But this is a section that essentially puts a marker down for design standards for the ordinance. And then lastly, I see that I have mislabeled, there's only eight sections, and I've mislabeled last section nine, which is data collection, performance standards, and public input. And they pretty much speak for themselves as far as how we can measure how well we're doing if we decide to adopt this ordinance and how it's going to fit into our budgeting and allowing for public participation in policy and budgetary decisions about individual projects. So that's it. Like I said, it was the broader approach to, ordinances are only one of several. And CJ will touch on this, I believe, in his presentation. But ordinances are only one of several ways to really get this moving forward in the town of Portsmouth. There you have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Before we continue on, is there any, at this point, would there be any comments from our councilors? I will get the public comments in a little bit, but I just, you know, going through with if there are any initial comments from any of the councilors on just the overall concept here of the ordinance that's with.
Just two comments, Mr. President. First of all, I did sign in, but I signed in 10 minutes late. Peter problems. The second question I had, if some developer has already purchased property in the town with the intent to develop, does this ordinance, if we enact it soon, does that apply to property that's already been purchased but has yet to be developed?
Well, I mean.
Well.
Probably difference of opinions here. Ms. Crosby, do you want to?
No, no, please, go ahead.
Well, I think if a project is currently in the works, you can't retroactively apply ordinance to them. You know, if there's something in the foreseeable future, they would probably get in without having to fully comply with this ordinance because the ordinance is, right now, it's just a workshop tonight. I think from a scheduling perspective, we would take comments tonight, but we would also be looking for an advisory opinion from our planning board. There's still some groundwork that would need to be done in order to take this to the next step of getting it ready to adopt an ordinance. You know, we would have to be checking in against our current regulations, making sure that we dotted the i's, crossed the t's, avoid unintentional conflicts with some of our other regulations. There's certain things in here that may also be impacted by, you know, other regulations from DEM or something like that. So there's still some things that we probably need to flush out, maybe the planning board, you know, when they weigh in on it. I think an advisory opinion from them would go a long way in seeing how this could be implemented into our current program. So the short answer is if somebody's proposing a subdivision at the moment, we don't have a complete street ordinance, so I think they would proceed under our current design standards.
I would add too that if we adopt this ordinance, we will have to go back through and revise our subdivision regulation to conform to this order, to be in compliance or, you know, in conformity, to conform with this ordinance. And so I would say, Kevin Gavin can perhaps back me up on this one. I think that any developer who has gotten his permits under the subdivision regulations that are in place now would be able to go forward. But perhaps if we, and then once we amend our subdivision regulations, any developers will have to come in and conform to those new regulations.
Can I add to that as well, please? I think this is getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, like you already implied. But I think if we could just take a step back and look at the big picture, one thing that, one step that I think is going to be important in this process is, you know, really digging deep into the implementation of it and prioritization of projects. It's not like we're going to pass this ordinance and it's going to be like a blanket statement or law that's going to apply to every single road in Portsmouth, different levels of complete streetness. There's different levels of, you know, user friendliness for different roadway users, and it's going to be different for each kind of road and each volume of road. And so it's not going to be a blanket application to every single road. We're going to have to go through a pretty robust implementation, planning, and prioritization process. And I, you know, focus on the roadways where it's a priority to have complete streets element integrated. And, you know, the next step would then be funding. So I think this is just one small step in this whole process. We have an excellent draft in front of us that, you know, we can tweak to fit our needs better and to be a little bit stronger in a couple elements. But, um, yeah, I think we need to just take a step back and just keep in mind the big picture of what we're trying to achieve in terms of quality of life and health and equity and access to different forms of transportation within Portsmouth.
I mean, clearly a dead-end street with three houses on it has much different requirements than East Main Road, for instance.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I have some very, I think I'm probably going to just hold back some comments tonight until we have this discussion, as we just mentioned, about the bigger picture and how we might approach this and some of the impacts. I have comments that are with, you know, fine granularity on the ordinance itself. For example, the policy statement of O2 says, it is the policy of the town of Portsmouth that DPW shall, to the maximum extent possible, incorporate complete streets infrastructure. And I want to avoid a future quarrel where someone argues maximum extent possible means something different than what the rest of this document says. Because this document has a very carefully drafted section on implementation, and it has sections on exceptions. And all of that isn't to the maximum extent. If it was to the maximum extent, we'd have no exceptions. So I would propose to wordsmith some of this, but I think that tonight's probably not the night for that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Anyone else from the council at this point?
Just to conclude, I want to let the council and Mr. Crosby and everyone know that I will have very specific language changes to the proposed ordinance before, at some point.
And we may be able to circle back to that during some of the discussion. I too have some, you know, general questions/clarifications, again, just related to the ordinance. So what I'd like to do, and I respect everybody's comments, what I'd like to do is allow CJ to give us an update or an overview of his presentation. do is allow CJ to give us an update or an overview of his presentation. We did have a similar presentation, you know, several months ago, and I think that this will be helpful for the viewing audience to, to get an understanding of, um, what complete streets are, what the concept for complete streets, um, what that concept is, uh, because complete streets can mean a lot of different things to, to different folks. So I think what we need to do right now is kind of walk, walk through that process, give some examples of, of what complete streets are and, you know, how they could be envisioned in the town of Portsmouth. So with that, I would, CJ, if you're ready?
Yeah. Um, yes, thank you very much. Would it be all right if I shared my screen instead of going off of the, the PDF here? Oh, thank you. Oops. All right. Oh, I am not able right now to share my screen, it looks like.
This is that.
No problem. Thank you. Nope, not yet. Oh, there we go. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Thanks again. Let's see if I can get this to function. All right. So, yeah, thank you very much for inviting me and letting me share this with you today. I did, as was just stated, I did sort of do around one of this. I think it was almost exactly a year ago, it was last fall-ish. But I was happy to be asked to come back and kind of give a round too. So this looks a little bit different than that first presentation. Hopefully some stuff, some content that's going to be specifically useful to, you know, where we, where we are now rather than where we were a year ago, sort of less, um, plenty of conceptual stuff, but a little bit more content that I think will be useful in, in thinking about what this is really going to look like in Portsmouth specifically, and thinking about, you know, where to go from, from this draft. So my name is CJ Erberthausen. I'm the Director of Training and Placemaking with GrowSmart Rhode Island. Just a quick note on that, GrowSmart Rhode Island, we're a statewide nonprofit. We advocate for sustainable, you know, smart growth. So we're very interested in things like historic preservation, conserving our farms and forests, um, and, uh, you know, transportation, having a lot of different transportation options. And I think complete streets is a big part of that, and that's part of my portfolio here at GrowSmart is, um, thinking about and talking about walkability and bikability and things like that. So I'm really happy to, to be sharing this with you guys today. So what are complete streets? They're kind of what they sound like. It's a street that is complete and, and available and accessible to everybody. So a complete street is a street that is for everyone, um, no matter who they are or how they travel. And a complete street, you know you have a complete street when it's accommodating all users, which really means all modes. So that's, you know, if you're on a bike, or if you're in a wheelchair, if you're in a car, or if you're in a truck, or if you're, you know, walking, whatever. And kind of as a subpoint to that, all abilities, because not everyone has the same ability. I'm a very able-bodied person, um, but certainly not everyone is. And I think it's also worth remembering that it's very easy to become, um, you know, not able-bodied. One quick accident or, or, you know, you step on a curb weird, which I've done, um, and you're kind of hobbling around for a while, you know, you kind of, you might see a street differently. So a complete street is one that accommodates every one of all abilities and, and speeds as well. Um, and the, the, the use of a complete street is one that is going to feel all at once, uh, safe, comfortable, and convenient. And I think safe, we can understand what that means, um, without much explanation, but I think comfortable is, is partly a perceived safety. It's, you know, do you feel like your life is in danger, which really means, do you want to use this street or is it too, you know, scary to use? And a lot of people, for instance, might walk on a certain street, but they wouldn't feel comfortable or safe biking on that street, certainly not in the street, uh, maybe on the sidewalk, but not in the street itself, which is where, you know, we're really supposed to, to be using our bicycles if, if it's, you know, we feel safe enough to do so. So it has to hit those checkpoints and being convenient. And convenient in this, in this scenario sort of means, um, for instance, like this person in a power chair, um, if there's a curb ramp there, that person can get up on the sidewalk easily, but if there's not a curb ramp where this person wants to get up on the sidewalk, you know, they might have to go, um, any number of yards or even, you know, like a half mile out of their way to get up on the sidewalk. So it's keeping it convenient for those types of folks. And sometimes you just want to cross the street, um, where you want to cross the street rather than walking, um, a lot farther to, to use crosswalks and maybe crossing, you know, multiple streets to get, um, to get where you want to, where you can see you want to go. So these are kind of the elements in their meaning in, in the, in the context of complete streets. Um, and we, the thing is, we know how to do this. We've known how to do this for a very long time to build streets that do this. This is how streets, you know, streets used to do all of that. The, the very first streets used to do all of that. They accommodated everybody that used them. People that were using them didn't feel unsafe or uncomfortable or inconvenienced because, you know, they were built for those people. And with the advent of the automobile and we kind of built our communities around the automobile, um, you know, with all of its convenience and benefits, when we build streets around them, we start to move away from complete streets that were, you know, our historic streets that were public spaces and people walked on them. And we started giving more and more space to cars where we're at the point where we have like a teeny tiny percentage of our street spaces given to someone like me who doesn't have a car, someone that's walking or, or biking or in a wheelchair. And so with less and less space, you know, there's a lot of consequences and we have a lot of environments that look, um, more like this. And this is, you know, something that we've probably all seen a million times. This could be, this could be on a Quidnic Island, this could be in California, this could be in Indiana. We have a lot of intersections like this. And as you can see, it's not exactly, it may be called Paradise Road, but it's not exactly a walking paradise. It's, it's extremely unsafe. I would not call this comfortable, and I would certainly not call this very convenient. And it's not somewhere that I think any of us would want to spend any more time than we had to. So, so we know better than this. And this, I think, might look a little bit familiar. This is West Main Road in Middletown. And, you know, it's not nearly as bad as that last intersection, it's four lanes. But I think if we looked at that sidewalk, we immediately see a problem, right? We, we know that that sidewalk is almost rendered useless by the placement of these poles. I'm able to sneak by that, it's not really, you know, an issue for me, but if I were in a wheelchair or using a walker, um, it would be a different story. And, you know, we, we know how to do better than this, I think is the, the, the real issue here is, is this is not necessary and we can do a lot better. And this might look even more familiar. This is, of course, East Main Road in Portsmouth. Granted, you know, this and the last image, these are both state-owned roads. And I know there's only so much that municipalities can do, and that's a problem that persists across the country, believe me. But, you know, we know how to do better than this too. This is clearly not, there may be some, you know, you may say there's some pedestrian infrastructure here, and that's true. There's some sidewalks and there's, you can kind of see some crosswalks, but I think we know that this, this looks a little bit too similar to that first Paradise Road intersection. And so we know how to do better than this too. You know, this is not how this has to look. And that street certainly couldn't accommodate people, people walking very well. And unfortunately, Sprague Street right in Portsmouth, um, this is just taken from Google Street View, same as the last two pictures. And you can clearly see, you know, this street is not really accommodating those who are already very clearly using this street. I would call that a very vulnerable road user. That's a student, I assume, um, probably walking home from school, and there is no infrastructure there. I would not call this safe, comfortable, or convenient for that person. And I, I think that, you know, this image should be on, like, we should be dissatisfied with, with this situation, I think. And, you know, another big component of complete streets is, is transit users. And it says a lot when a bus stop ends up looking like this. I think it's kind of, it shows who this is built for and who it's certainly not built for. We know how to do better than this too. And I'll just say kind of anecdotally, um, I have bussed down to Portsmouth a couple of times and, you know, I mean, I will say first, the, the 60 is, is a, is a blessing. It's a real asset for all the Quidnic Islands. It's actually very frequent, um, it runs very late, uh, in Portsmouth. You know, you're kind of lucky that it, that you have, you know, West and East Main Road. You get kind of back and forth service, which is pretty, pretty awesome. And yet, you know, you wouldn't think that Portsmouth was very grateful to have folks like me busting down into Portsmouth. I've gotten off at bus stops on, I think, East, I think both, um, East and West Main Road. And they didn't look that much different than this. I mean, was there a guardrail and overgrowth? No, but I was kind of dumped out into basically a ditch and had to walk, you know, in a ditch for, until I got to my destination, um, which I don't think really is capitalizing on that real awesome asset that you have, which is, you know, pretty, um, pretty frequent and convenient rip-to-service. So we know how to do better than this too. And, you know, simply adding some infrastructure to accommodate folks like me who don't have a car, or, you know, I couldn't, certainly couldn't have taken the bus and traversed the way I did if I weren't able-bodied. No chance. So, you know, I, I would love to visit Portsmouth more, but frankly, that experience isn't that enjoyable, that getting off and walking in a ditch for a while. So, so I don't do it as often as I'd like, but, you know, we can kind of capitalize on, again, folks like me that would love to come visit Portsmouth and go to Sydney or any number of, of places on East or West Main Road. And I think this is the image, I think that complete streets are our best, um, this image should be burned into your brain as like a situation we shouldn't have happening, just simply adding curb cuts. Just, this is just a situation where not everyone was thought about. This is not a complete street. We're not accommodating everybody. It's, that's clearly using this, this road. Um, and I just kind of threw this in here. This is a very surface level, um, like pocket change, uh, amount of the, of the vast benefits of, of a complete street, of a walk, walkable and, and more bikeable environment. I think that last image kind of got at equity a little bit, you know, just accommodating those who don't own a car like me or, or cannot physically drive or cannot afford a car. You know, creates a more equitable, age-friendly, certainly. And that's a, being age-friendly is, I think, a goal that more and more communities across the state are really striving for, because Rhode Island is aging actually quite quickly compared to the rest of the country. And inclusive, actually 20% of Providence residents don't own a car. So I'm not that, I might look kind of weird, but I'm not that weird. And, you know, accommodating those folks is, is important, I think. It's, it's an opportunity. Just really quickly, health, very obviously, if we make walking, um, more possible, not just for fun, but if you're going to get a gallon of milk or you want to go visit a friend, or you run to church, um, you know, doing that and building that into your life because it's safe, comfortable, and convenient, um, it's going to, pretty obviously, right, it's going to reduce risk of obesity, heart disease, diabetes, dementia, depression, um, you name it. Walking, you know, helps with that, it seems like. Um, and, and the one sentence I have here for the environmental benefits that I think are pretty obvious, um, less traffic means cleaner air. That's, that's a teeny tiny piece, but that falls into health as well. And I think that we should think of having slight, you know, more walkable communities as, uh, an investment, um, because there's a lot of economic benefits in a lot of different ways. Bike paths, uh, and just having more walkable communities attract, uh, tourists and visitors. I have a whole bunch of data on that that I'd be happy to share. Pedestrians and bicyclists tend to spend more locally than drivers. And then you might think, well, drivers are, are driving around and, and getting more groceries at once because they have a trunk. And that's totally true, but, you know, if you can walk or bike to a place that you've, that you would be able to frequent, um, studies show that those folks are actually spending much more overtime than those who are taking a car, because they kind of build a connection with the trip to that shop, and they build a connection with the shop itself. And you think about it, it's easier to stop and get a cup of coffee, it's very tempting, or, you know, a cookie, if you're like walking by a bakery and you smell it, and it takes just a split, the second decision to turn left and open up a door rather than having to find a parking spot and, you know, parking your car and locking your car. And, um, so there's a lot of benefits in, in shopping locally. Walkable communities, even slightly more walkable communities, uh, see their property values rise, uh, pretty immensely. Having to drive less, pretty obviously means you have to spend less on gas, you have to spend less on fixing your car, you know, getting your oil change, all that stuff. So you have more money to spend, you know, maybe locally or to invest. Uh, and then the last little one I'll throw out there is that, you know, if you have fewer cars on the road, uh, it means less frequent road repair. And another benefit is if you hate traffic, good news, if you get some people into bikes or on foot, you're going to have less traffic on the road, less cars in front of you. So, um, you should be grateful when you see folks walking or biking, because that's one less car that you're, um, having to deal with on, you know, maybe East or, or West Main Road, for instance. Okay, so I've covered a lot of sort of what complete streets means and what we can, some of the things we can get out of complete streets, but how do we, how do we do that? Well, there's a lot of different strategies. It's not one size fits all, and there's a lot of different, um, sort of levels of commitment, if you will, of, of complete streets. So I'll just move from left to right on this image. Um, on the left, you're actually seeing the state's very first protected bike lane, uh, that's on Fountain Street and here in Providence. And, um, there have since been, I think, a couple more added, but, uh, this was originally just paint, just simply they're repaving the street and they painted this protected bike lane. They just worked it into the designs, they didn't have to move any curbs or anything like that. And they just left it as paint without the vertical separation for a while. And this sort of a funny story, which I may have told a year ago, um, but, uh, it was just paint for a long time, and actually a resident of Providence bought 100 $1 plungers and just stuck them up and down that stretch to create vertical separation, because vertical separation is a game changer. It, the paint suggests that cars won't drive on that or park there, but the, the, those ballards that you see are just plastic and not very expensive. But the city put those down after those plungers. But that guy knew what he was doing, because those, those plungers, that vertical separation, even if it's just plungers, um, you know, it, it really restricts cars from, from parking on those. So, uh, that made the news and everything, it was, it was pretty great. In the middle here, you're seeing a little bit more of an investment, and this is one, was one sort of manifestation of what you guys have been talking about a little bit in Portsmouth, which is a road diet. This is one way that that can look. So again, they didn't move curbs here on the outside, um, but on the before picture, you see how it looked, and on the, on the after picture below, um, what they did was they just slimmed down the lanes, they made it one lane in each direction with the left turn lane, which, when you have the left turn lane, we all know it, you know, it really does make a difference, you know, if you're way behind somebody, um, turning left. But the biggest thing is, for our purposes today, is you can see that crosswalk, um, it's a much, much, much shorter distance, uh, from that island in the middle where you can sort of wait, wait out another gap in traffic. You're crossing one, maybe, I would guess that's like an 11-foot lane, instead of probably like 50 feet. You're doing 11 feet twice instead of 50 feet once or something like that. So, you know, that, that's a, a huge step forward in complete streetiness. And on the right, you're seeing a really low level of, of commitment. It's also just paint and plastic. This is, um, cutting down the, the curb radii at this intersection. What that does is cars can, you know, cars, drivers, we're going to, we're going to approach a street with what it gives us. If it lets us go fast and turn fast, we're going to do that. Even if it's not safe, it's just sort of our human nature, unfortunately. So cutting down that curb radii a little bit and the turn radius, um, makes that safer. Reducing the crosswalk is also happening here, and that makes that safer. And it's also just kind of visually fun, and it shows a little bit of, uh, who's being thought about in this intersection. It's not just cars, that there are people here too, and, and, uh, this paint and plastic, you know, is, is for them. And that's sort of just an iterative approach. Again, rather than investing thousands and thousands and moving curbs and pouring concrete, you can just do something like that sometimes. There we go. So a little bit more on that kind of concept, because, um, you know, you might be saying, I don't really understand how a complete street is going to look on, you know, X or Z road in Portsmouth. And the really nice thing is that you can test it out before you buy it. From left to right on this picture, on the left, you're seeing, and this is just a small town in Connecticut, this is actually my friend Eric, um, doing this project. So he was hired by that town to just test out, what would it, what would it look like? What would it be like if we had a, a two-way bike lane? If you can kind of picture, like, if we all know, um, like East Bay Bike Path, this is kind of like putting that down on the side of this road here. Um, and so all he did was he got some paint, and actually those green, uh, things there are just like mats that are placed down on the, on the street, but a little bit of paint or chalk and a little bit of some mats and just a few cones. And he tested out what it would be like, and he surveyed people using it, you know, how do you like this? How is this going for you? Would you use this if this was permanent, that kind of stuff? And that's an incredibly cheap way, if you're going to repave a street, to just test out an idea before you commit some money to it. And in the middle, that's actually me at that table, so a little, you know, kind of cameo there, um, helping that same guy, Eric. This is another town in Connecticut where they, um, they had already blocked off this alleyway that used to connect a parking lot and their kind of main street, um, from car traffic, and you can tell that's a restaurant there, and they have like outdoor seating and stuff. But we put up some, some lights and we just made some like fun chalk designs and had some games and some, some planters and stuff like that, um, just for a day. And, uh, did the same thing, we surveyed people on their use of the space. Do you like this? Do you wish it was sort of more of a plaza? And that chalk, you know, I think it rained that night, that chalk washed away, and it was like a, it was like a circus, you were gone by the next day. But it was again, just incredibly, you know, no investment at all, just sort of testing something out. And on the right, you're seeing another sort of strategy like that, just adding some different, you know, vertical separation and making it clear that's for pedestrians, bicyclists, just seeing how it goes, just testing that out. And so these are, these are things to do before, you know, diving into anything. These are really easy things to do. And I want to just pull all together and show sort of the toolkit that we have to make things feel like a complete street. This is just a shot again from Google Street View, my best friend. This is Broadway in Newport. A few years ago, they redid it with a very complete street sort of approach. Actually, green and complete streets because you can kind of see the, the gray bricks on the right there where cars are parking. Because they're bricks, they're actually permeable. And so they, they let some rainwater down and be filtered instead of running off into the, to the, to the bay. With all the pollutants and stuff that's on the parking surface there. So it does have that green element, but it has all these great complete streets elements at once. So we have a crosswalk, obviously. We have sort of, it's like a warning pad for folks that are visually impaired. That's what that sort of bumpy surface is there. Right in front of that, we have ballards to protect, again, that vertical separation makes a huge difference. And those ballers have light on them, lights kind of in them, you can sort of see them there. And I will say, whiting is like the single best investment you can make, certainly at intersections and crosswalks to prevent pedestrian crashes. We have seating, we have bike racks, we have, you know, trash cans, we have street trees. We got everything here and it's accommodating more patronizing of all these businesses on Broadway. It's, it's providing more space for outdoor dining. It's making it a lot more comfortable and you can see people using it as an actual public space. This, this sort of just a extending a crosswalk led to this little kind of mini plaza, which is pretty incredible. So those are a lot of the tools that we sort of are working with here. But I want to talk about, you know, we're not, you know, Portsmouth isn't, isn't Newport. Portsmouth isn't Providence, Portsmouth isn't Central Falls, Portsmouth is Portsmouth. And we have to respect that. And the nice thing about complete streets is it's, it's a philosophy and it's a goal and it's an idea and it's a concept. And it is not one size fits all and it is gonna look differently in every community and on every single street. And so you know, as long as it's safe, comfortable and convenient, it's accommodating all of our road users, you know, it's, it's a complete street. And so here, this is a, a interesting concept. Strategy in, in Hanover, New Hampshire, so not very far away. This is what they call an advisory shoulder. And if you can sort of picture this same road without that paint. I think we all know how to approach that in a car, right? Like we would probably drive sort of in the middle and then if another car was coming, we'd shift over to the right and that car would shift over to the right and we'd pass each other and we'd continue on. And this advisory shoulder basically is asking for that same, that same process, that same natural process. Except now, we are indicating that the sides of this, of this street, when there are people or bicyclists there, it's for them. Like it's sort of just a a little bit of a sidewalk, a little bit of a bike path all at once. And so these, you know, kids are, are walking on this advisory shoulder. And if a car were to come, it would stay in the middle. And if a car were to come behind them, it would stay in the middle and those cars pass each other. Again, they would just sort of very carefully negotiate around each other, but it's just paint. The amazing thing is it's just paint and it totally shifts, you know, the, the prioritization of who gets to use this road. You know, you might, like I would be, you know, walking in the, in the, again, in the ditch here if they were, if it wasn't clear exactly who was really supposed to be using this road. So this sort of indicates that there is space for pedestrians and bicyclists here. And it's just paint, again, I think is important. So I thought, you know, kind of poking around, this is a street that looks a lot like what that other street from before would look like without that paint. This is Headley Street. And I'm sorry, I mistyped the name. I realize right now down there at the bottom. But, uh, you know, this could have that same treatment potentially, or you could even sort of try it out with temporary paint and see how that worked. And, you know, there are a lot of strategies with, again, I'm trying to emphasize that there are a lot of cheap and creative solutions to just try some stuff out to make them complete streets and make that concept a reality. So this is one, you know, potential place to try out that advisory shoulder. And this is a, this is, looks pretty familiar. This is just a paved shoulder in Montpelier, Vermont. You can see that, you know, it's, it's flat, it's wide. These folks certainly feel safe enough using it to, to go jogging. And this is Montpelier Vermont, working with what they got on this road, right? Like this is what they can do here. And so that's what they're doing. And we kind of have that going on already on Boyd's Lane. We have some kind of a shoulder. I think we can recognize that it's not quite as, as flat and, and sort of inviting as that last one. It is nice. It doesn't have the guard rail, but you can see on the right side here, this is again, just from Google Street View. It kind of tapers off a little bit. And so I think if the, the shoulder were just more purposeful here, you know, this, this could potentially qualify as a complete street if, if it's safe and it's accommodating everyone who's using it. And they feel safe, comfortable and not inconvenient, then it's doing its job. And unfortunately, this is back at Sprague Street and this is the same day, apparently, Google Streets, Google Street View. And this kid right here is walking in the street. I don't think that any one of us would want this to be our, our kid, I don't think. You know, we know we can do better than this. We could try out some of those strategies from before. This might require something different. But it's, it's certainly not accommodating, very clearly not accommodating safely those who are already using it right now. So again, I just want to reiterate, a complete street looks different everywhere. It's simply, it's something, a street that safely, comfortably and conveniently accommodates those who are using it. You know, we're not asking to put bike lanes down on a road where bicycling on it as is is completely safe. Or where there is no interest in bicycling. We already, we can see who's using these roads clearly. And we just need to accommodate those folks better. And we need to invite folks who are interested in walking and biking more to do so with the right infrastructure. So we're at this place now where we've got this draft ordinance and we're, we're considering what to do with this and where to go from here. So I think it's important to just note, especially for folks watching, what is a complete streets ordinance? It's, it requires serious consideration, an appropriate implementation of complete streets elements and complete streets philosophy. And typically, this is only gonna happen with future road projects. So there was some discussion before about, you know, a development. And so, correct, like when this is enacted, from then on, you know, projects that allow for the installation of some complete streets elements. They would, they would sort of be under the microscope of making sure that they're doing so to the, to the fullest reasonable extent that they can. And the nice thing about ordinances is they stay put no matter the town council. You know, I'll get into this in just a second, but resolutions, they don't do that. They just sort of are a thumbs up for complete streets and that's, you know, that's great. That's a good first step, but it doesn't really get anything done. There was actually a wave of, of complete streets resolutions, thanks in part to the work at Grow Smart in like 2011 and 2012. And so there were, I think, seven or eight or, or maybe nine that were passed around then across the state. And it was a good starting point again, but it didn't, you know, those aren't laws and those aren't even policies. And so if we're talking about what this might look like, again, here's sort of just like a, in no particular order, I suppose. An ordinance is gonna have the strongest implementation. And I think the biggest thing here that, that the ordinance requires is it establishes a process. And so Gary was talking a lot about the, the exceptions. And that's a really big piece of it because you're creating a process by which you're kind of checking some boxes and making sure. Again, sort of under a microscope of ideally actually more than one person. That, you know, this, this is doing everything it can to be a complete street. This is, you know, yeah, this is like, this checks the boxes. This is a complete street. This feels right. It creates a process that fits, feels right for Portsmouth that does that. Again, a resolution that shows support, but it does not require any, any action necessarily at all. A policy is not binding. It might be sort of blended in, in a way to, you know, your comp plan or something like that. So it's not binding, but it, in the way that an ordinance is, but it establishes cross departmental engagement and sort of gets sort of a process going perhaps, depending on the language, which is also, you know, good. But again, the, the real commitment to simply believing in the complete streets policy, uh, elements and philosophy is to put forth an ordinance and enact that. So one sort of tool as far as this checking the boxes stuff that I'm talking about here. Just something to sort of think about that a lot of, a lot of places put together to do something like that is some version of a bicycle and pedestrian advisory commission. Providence is just had hours, a couple hours ago, actually. And, you know, for the purposes of just checking the boxes of, of a complete streets ordinance, it might be something more like a complete streets committee. Which is also fantastic. A B-PAC, as it's called, is, you know, typically just residents who are reviewing plans, which is really great, I think. A complete streets committee might be more like staff members from different departments, or maybe board members being on a team and again, checking those boxes for complete streetsiness for these projects. Something to consider. And speaking a little bit to the language in the ordinance specifically that addresses the state owned roads and addresses RIDE. Really, really important to note that RIDE enacted its own complete streets law about eight years ago. A lot of people don't know that. And the reason they don't know that is that I, I think is that RIDE doesn't always churn out roads that we would call complete streets. And unfortunately, you know, I'm really glad that that law exists. But I think it takes a little bit extra of, some extra oomph and energy to hold RIDE's feet to its own fire, as it were. And I think an ordinance is an opportunity to do that because again, RIDE has its own complete streets law. And including a little bit of language in the ordinance, you know, asking or telling RIDE to stick to its own law, follow its own law, you know, is, is an opportunity. I mean, to work with RIDE when they were doing work in Portsmouth. So something to think about here. And I think Gary mentioned this, this was language that I was, was forwarded to all of you. That I think does a good job. This is from Madison, Connecticut. And they have a similar situation, you know, there's, their Connecticut DOT has a complete streets law as well. And Madison, in their policy language, they basically said, you're gonna, you know, your, your own law is, is gonna apply to all your projects in our town. And so that's, you know, an opportunity to sort of use this language here in Rhode Island, I think. And again, one last time, it's a philosophy and it's a flexible process. It's certainly not gonna just like suddenly sidewalks are gonna appear on every road and street in Portsmouth and it's gonna cost you, you know, millions and millions of dollars. It's, it's a, it's a process, it's a philosophy, it's case by case and it's street by street and it's community by community. And you know, I think there's plenty of room for complete streets in Portsmouth and they're gonna look different than a complete street in Newport or Providence. And that's fantastic. They should. And again, as long as it safely, comfortably and conveniently is accommodating those who are using it, you know, it qualifies as a complete street. And I think this is, this is a goal that I think we can and should all get behind for, for very obvious reasons. And so I think that's it. Yeah. So thank you. Happy to answer any questions and I'll be here for the rest of the meeting as well.
Thank you CJ. That was, that was very informative. A lot of, a lot of good information in there. And, you know, some of the stuff that you touched base on were, were some of the, you know, possible questions, concerns that, you know, maybe some of the residents are thinking of. You definitely addressed some of the, some of my thoughts as you were going through it. At this point, I know that there were a few questions being answered by some folks. But if there are counselors, are any counselors that would like to touch base or ask any questions to CJ at this point?
Sure, I'd like to.
Sure.
Say something. First, I just want to say thank you CJ again for coming back out and giving this presentation. I, I always enjoy listening to it and, um, you know, can relate to a lot of those pictures that you show. I love that they use, that you use the word morphing. I think that's exactly what we're gonna have to spend some time to do is how to find out how to mold and shape this process so that it fits our needs and kind of achieves our goals here in Portsmouth and morph into a more walkable community. And I think the other thing I'd like to stress is that, um, you know, we, we can really just need to figure out where to start and we need to start somewhere. And there's a lot of small improvements that we can make. And I'll just, I jotted down some, some examples while you were going through. I, I live off of Middle Road and I drive on Middle Road and Stubtoe and East Main Road often. And I actually do see a lot of children walking on the street. There's a lot of kids that get home from middle school and walk along Stubtoe Road down to Cumberland Farms. And so I'm in this little pocket of Portsmouth that does have some walkability, but it, um, it's very nerve wracking to see three teenagers walking, you know, side by side along Stubtoe Road with cars coming by and kind of having to dodge in and out. So there's, I think, you know, we just need to identify some of our priorities and identify where complete streets would have the greatest positive impact on our community. And start from there. We also have an issue with, you know, we do have some curb cuts, but then we have curb cuts that go nowhere. I know another intersection is Union and East Main Road. There's a brand new beautiful curb cut that was added to the corner. And it connects to nothing. It, there's the curb cut in the corner, no sidewalk on one side, no sidewalk on that side. So I'm not sure where people that get onto the curb go from there. And there's a lot of room for improvement there as well. We also, another example is, um, we have a couple pedestrian crosswalks that were added at key locations. I'm gonna use the one at Town Hall, for example. And I actually ventured out on a bicycle with my two young children and we biked around and then decide, we crossed East Main Road at a light and decided to cross back at that intersection. And we picked, you know, and we picked the location where there's a pedestrian crosswalk. But on either side, there's about, you know, a foot and a half drop off of a grassy slope. So you kind of launch yourself off into the middle of East Main Road and run across and get over to the other side. And there's, you know, there's a lot of little focused, localized improvements that we can make that could have a really big impact on our quality of life in, in Portsmouth. And then the last point that I want to make is, you know, a lot of people heard about or attended the farm to farm bike ride that we've had the past couple of years. Unfortunately, this year it was canceled, but it was organized by Bike Newport. I see Barry Freeman in the list of attendees. So hi Barry. And I think the, the popularity and reactions to that event really kind of shows that like if you build it, they will come. And there, there is a lot of room for us to, to try different elements where if you make it safe and comfortable and accessible for people, they will come out and walk and ride. Cause frankly, people do walk and ride on Middle Road already. They're just, you know, traffic's dodging in and out going around them. So, um, I look forward to, to working together with Gary and Brian from DPW to, to really figure out where we can focus, where we can start and the, the steps that we can take to start morphing Portsmouth into a more complete streets kind of community. So, um, that's, that's enough for me. I'll leave it to anyone else who wants to speak up.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. We do have we have some questions.
Mr. President, I just wanted to reiterate one of the points that was made in the presentation. I'm on the phone every day with people who need to exercise because they're hypertensive, they're diabetic, they have cholesterol's elevated. They're getting over injuries. And in every part of the state, particularly among older people, I'm constantly hearing, I can't walk. There's no safe place to walk. And, you know, even in the wintertime, some will drive to one of the malls, but then they have to cross the ice in the parking lot to get to the inside of the mall and walk there. So, yeah, absolutely. We need to build, we need to, you know, have some roads in Portsmouth that people can walk on, particularly during this epidemic when gyms and workout and fitness places are closed. You know, I cannot, it's amazing to be just looking at my window, the number of people who are walking or bicycling up and down Adams Drive in front of our house. And, you know, it just, it really just underscores, this could be something we're doing all the time. We don't have an epidemic to do. And to have streets where people can actually use them for exercise and enjoyment is just critically important. And in a way, this epidemic is just kind of really reemphasized how important that is. So I think this is a, it's a really great idea that we're working on this.
Thanks, Ryan. Okay, I, I know we have a, a bunch of questions and some say they've been answered. So what do we got? Okay, let's go to, let's go to Mike. Let's go to Mike. We have Mike. Hello, Mike? Mike?
Oh, yes, unmute himself from his end.
I'm having trouble hearing.
Mike, can you hear us? Okay, well, let's hold out. Mike, if you are able to, he's unmuted, feel free to chime in. Let me just go to a couple of the questions. Looks like a lot of the questions have been answered. Mike is probably the Mike that's on here with a lot of these questions. All right. Okay. Do we have any other comments or questions from councilors? I do have a few. And some of it might just be, for clarification, some of the images that were shown tonight, and I think CJ did an excellent job of saying, "This is not a one, one solution fits all." And in some cases, you have to look at things on a case-by-case basis. And some of the things that we have to look at would be from the town. Where are these key roadways? How would you establish a network? Because there has to be certain standards, and I think what we probably have to start is looking at a reasonable design standard that we could use for a complete street model, a cross-section. We need to come up with something for different levels of roadways within the town. And what I'm saying is, if you have a subdivision road that is only 24 feet wide, that is not safe for two-way traffic plus a bike or pedestrian shoulder. I believe that you need about a 15-foot travelway in order to have a share-o, which would be something that a car and a bike can travel on. CJ, do you know? Does that sound right?
A share-o, is that you're asking about?
Yeah, for a safe, a minimum, you showed some examples of where you could have a car traveling on the road, and then you want to have a separated area or a share-o. You see them in Providence all the time.
Sure, yeah. So a share-o, for those that don't know, a share-o is sort of paint on the road that indicates, it's usually, it looks like a bike, and there's a couple sort of like triangles in front of it that indicates, this is a bike route. Typically, really, shares are best used, they're right where the cars are going to be as well, and they're just saying that there are going to be bikes here, expect them, be respectful of them, and it indicates to bicyclists that this is a slow street. It's usually pretty safe to bike here, you're not going to be in a lot of danger. And those can be on any width at all, because it's, again, just sort of indicating that this is where cars and bikes are going to share the street space, so that it can be as narrow as 10 or 11 feet or as wide as 15.
Okay. I thought it was a little different, but thank you for that clarification.
Sure, yeah.
So I think what we have to be careful about and why I think it's important for us to at least go through a process with identifying design standards, it's so that we can apply things, apply that with consistency when someone's looking to do a development or if we're looking to make improvements along a certain roadway. The reason being is, some of these roads are only 24 feet or 26 feet, and if you try to, even though it's only paint, if you try to take five feet of that travelway and use it as a protective shoulder, now you're potentially saying to cars, "Where do I drive?" So we have to be careful from that perspective, too, of not sending the wrong message to the driver of a vehicle. These are some of those unintended things that you need to think about. A lot of our roadways are residential. Most of the roadways that were kind of being highlighted were state roads, and I think what we need to do is continue to work with the DOT in order to look at opportunities there. There was a number of examples that have been pointed out, where we have inadequate crosswalks, we don't have the wheelchair ramps to get across, so that there's opportunities. There's obviously a lot of work to be done, but I think this is a great opportunity to try to move things. When we were looking at the three factors, you had ordinance, policy, and resolution. Resolution was step one, we've got that. Policy, we could be working towards policy now, we could be close to going down the road of step two. Step three, to me, would be an ordinance. And if we're going to go that far, I think we have to be very clear to our citizens, to developers, to anybody in town, that if we're going to introduce a complete street policy, they have to understand what those rules are. They're going to want to know, "How does this affect my project? What do I need to do? What are some examples?" So I think something, and this is where our planning board could be very instrumental, would be to adopt certain cross-sections, something along those lines for how a development could accommodate some of these complete street policies. And in that way, we're building safety into our future development. Our tougher challenge may be, how do we improve safety within some of our current roadway networks? Because the primary arteries through the town are all state-controlled, and most of our, all of our subdivisions, for the most part, filter to one of those arteries, whether it's East Main Road, West Main Road, Union Street, Sprague Street, Boyd's Lane. Those are all opportunities for us to look at, how do we make those connections better? But this is a great start, and I think we can continue to work with our planning department, our planning board, in order to come up with consistency so that we don't have a lot of different types of complete street practices. I think we should have some types of, we should have some standards so that development of complete streets are consistent, they know there are things that we can do, things that the town can maintain. So I think there's still some work to be done on the back end, but this is a great start. I think we're pointed in the right direction. And that's what I have to offer at this point.
Can I add to something that you said?
Sure.
You know, I agree with your comments about standards. I think there is a wealth of knowledge available out there with recommendations and standards, and I think we need to pull from existing sources. We don't, there's no need to reinvent the wheel here, because there are solutions that would be perfectly applicable and adaptable for Portsmouth. And there have been statewide plans that do address some of these design considerations that you're talking about. And Barry Freeman from Bike Newport actually mentioned this in the comments, and I would just like to point to it, but the state has been working on a bike mobility plan that's supposed to be adopted later this year. There's a draft available of it online, and it does highlight a lot of these improvements and suggestions that you're talking about, and lays out specific solutions for how to implement some of these improvements into roadways. So I would, I'd like to see us kind of pull from those different resources and figure out what is most applicable and effective for Portsmouth.
Fair enough. No, I think that's something that we should be deferring to our planning board in order to develop those standards that would be consistent for Portsmouth. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying recreate the wheel. There's a wealth of information out there, but I think it may be helpful for developers or development in the town to understand what types of things the town would be looking for, so that they know, "If I do this, I'm on the right track." That's all, just some design standards.
Much like we have for Stormwater.
Mr. President, I would suggest to respect the time of the folks who have come to the meeting, that even though the rest of the town council may want to chime in, and I want to chime in, perhaps we should go through the folks' questions that have been piling up, and let, so let the public have a chance to ask their questions.
Absolutely. Do you want to read them?
Can we try Mike again?
We can try Mike again. Is Mike available? He said he was not muted, so he's not muted on his end, so there is something going on.
Well, we're going to try.
This microphone does have a red line through it.
Nope. So. Are you here, Mike?
Mike, are you there?
He wrote in the comments that his microphone's not working, and asked somebody to call him so he can ask his questions.
What's his number?
Why don't we try Barry and see if it's a Zoom issue and not just a Mike issue?
He's logged on.
Pardon the pun, Mike.
Yeah.
But he's not. He didn't raise his hand with the phone. Hold on. This is Mike. Mike?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I actually have the Zoom on, but I have, I'm following my phone. Okay. Here's my question. I know, it just rings very close to home. I live down, right off of Sandy Point Beach, and my wife walks down Sandy Point Beach to walk the dog with her friends, et cetera, et cetera. You guys just recently, the town installed speed signs because the traffic is so bad. People are speeding down the road. And then as you start going down the hill, right before you get to Sigourney, recently someone installed a new sidewalk and a new driveway, and they put a stone wall on both sides of the driveway that's 18 inches to the fade down on town property or on town movement, on the sidewalk. And to me, that completely goes against the policy of complete streets. And I brought this to the attention of the building inspector, I brought it to the attention of Public Works, and I got an email from them saying, "It's approved, it's okay." And he goes, "At that point, they just have to go into uncommon traffic." And I'm like, "They're going into uncommon traffic, so as the driver's going up the street in the afternoon, and the sun's in his face, it's creating a huge safety issue, which goes against exactly what you guys just presented. How can the town allow this, but then stand behind complete streets?"
Okay, well, it's something that we'll have to take a look at. I'm not aware of the specific situation, but we'll take a look at that for you, Mike.
I mean, I'd be happy to meet someone from town council, Public Works, et cetera, and go over my concerns, because my wife walks down that street on a daily basis. And if somebody can reach out to me and make that appointment, I would bend over backwards to meet them.
Mike, can we get your last name, please?
Michael DiPaola, D-I-P-A-O-L-A. And my phone number is 401-369-1897.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, I don't have those answers for you tonight, but it is something we will follow up on.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your help.
Okay. So. Are there outstanding questions? I'm trying to. There were nine questions, six answered.
There's a couple more hands up.
Yeah. Okay, listen, someone find the questions, and we'll go to the hands. Who we have? Barry?
Yep.
Hi, Barry. Oh, wait a second. Okay, he should be unmuted. How are you doing, Barry?
I'm doing well. How are you?
I'm doing excellent.
Yeah, this is a wonderful presentation and discussion. I'm really enjoying and very excited to see it taking place. I just wanted to go back to what Daniella was sharing on my behalf. I sit on the Transportation Advisory Committee for the state, and work closely with statewide planning, as well as the statewide Pass to Progress Group and the Bicycle Mobility Planning Group for the state. And the document that Daniella was referring to, the Bicycle Mobility Plan, has already been completed. It was actually completed last July. It's being held on to by statewide planning to be adopted at the same time as the LRTP, Long Range Transportation Plan. But it is a very robust document with a lot of research that went into it, and what it does, Councilor Aguiar, is provide those standards that you're looking for. So it's based on the width of the streets and the volume of traffic on the streets, and the speed on the streets, and the users of the streets, and the destinations that they connect. And it says, if you, you kind of piece together what the road characteristics are, and you find the best practices for a road like that. So there's a lot of really good information already available that you look at and you adjust and adapt to meet the requirements of that street. So I just want to urge you that that information exists, and that Rhode Island, as they and statewide standing are very much behind these kinds of efforts to implement what's best for those roads and for the people who are using them, all the modes of transportation that are using them. So good luck using all of the resources, and we look forward to that being adopted. But it is currently very much available. PlanRI.com has all of the documents there. When you go to PlanRI.com, it says "Documents" at the top of the page, and you click on that, and you'll see Bike Mobility Plan, and you'll be able to go to Chapter 3 or 4 and see all of this available to help you understand what these things might look like. I really applaud CJ for bringing up the advisory roads. That's a very viable concept for a quidnic islands where we have differing widths and differing users. And as an example, when we measure roads to accommodate two lanes of traffic and two bike lanes, how often do we see two bikes and two cars on the road at the same time? So to dismiss the ability to accommodate bicyclists because there's not enough widths for bike lane, car lane, car lane, bike lane, when in fact, you never have the four side by side, and it doesn't give us the respect as people to be able to figure out what to do when two vehicles, bicycle and car even, are there together. We do it all the time on our roads. We use our intuition, our common sense, to move left or right to accommodate someone based on vulnerability, speed, et cetera. Those advisory lanes put that into practice. They say we don't need to have designated for four vehicles that aren't going to be there at the same time. Let's just advise people of where the most vulnerable might be and call people's attention that they might be there at some time, and then ask the motorized vehicles to accommodate those by slowing down or moving left or right. So thanks for raising advisory, CJ. Good luck to Portsmouth. Newport is right behind you. We also have a Green and Complete Streets ordinance in the works, and I hope we all accomplish this for the best of everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Barry.
Thanks, Barry.
So now we will move on to the, do we have a phone number? Hello? Oh, they just commuted. We need to mute Barry and unmute the other one. Hi, Eric. Hello?
I don't know if I got through.
You got through, name and address, please.
Okay. This is CDO P, sorry about that. Some quick, CDO P of 8511. I just wanted to offer some thoughts while we're still in the drafting mode to throw this stuff in here until we wait to the last possible minute. One of the big things I see coming up is that we really do need data, defining ownership of land in Portsmouth. Who owns what? Because this question is typically a major source of confusion and angst. Is the street and by the way owned by the town? Or is DOT, or is DEM? There's a lot of finger pointing, a lot of confusion in the public. People don't know if the road is privately owned, or there are easements involved. Who do you call to report in their share? I just wanted to offer some thoughts while we're still in the drafting mode to throw this stuff in here until we wait to the last possible minute. One of the big things I see coming up is that we really do need data, defining ownership of land in Portsmouth. Who owns what? Because this question is typically a major source of confusion and angst. Is the street and by the way owned by the town? Or is DOT, or is DEM? There's a lot of finger pointing, a lot of confusion in the public. People don't know if the road is privately owned or there are easements involved. Who do you call to report in their shoe? What if a tree falls across the sidewalk on a town road? Who's going to clear that tree? Is it the landowner, Public Works? What if there is major debris in a bicycle lane that's through a state road? Those with a sharp memory may be called back in February of 2017. I brought up determining the responsibility for shoveling snow off a sidewalk. We did table that. We didn't address it at that point in time, but this may be a good time to revisit that topic because we're talking about where we are going to demarcate, line the responsibility. Even small items, clearing litter, mud, sand and road stones, branches and leaves, weed overgrowth, on and on. If you have a complete street, we really need it to be crystal clear to line the demarcation. Is GIS good enough at the town hall level? Is it granular enough in a publicly accessible portal so people really understand what pieces of land is owned or who had the responsibility for these various activities I just identified above? Additionally, I just wanted to offer is really paramount to raise the importance of stake warrants. It gives us an opportunity to install several, you have to jump all over it, couldn't allow for very brutality. There's nothing more exasperating than to see a freshly paved dug up in less than a year to do something. This is a great opportunity for the town of Portsmouth to indirectly facilitate improved broadband because several conduits allow for the installation of fiber optic cables. Internet connectivity, if you extend it by fiber optics, will enable automated transportation usage or other technologies that we cannot yet imagine. So those are my two thoughts for you to chew on. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you, Jake. Okay. What is it? Yeah, question. Broke it down to questions? Give me one second. So we have a question from Row. How can I get involved with the planning process and help the citizens of Portsmouth protect the natural environment in our community and prioritize the high-traffic areas to create complete streets to protect our children, bikers, walkers and bus transit citizens? Well, at this point, participating tonight is a start. I think what will happen from here, we move towards the planning. We would be looking for a planning board recommendation and it will probably be a public hearing associated with, with that at the planning board level. So again, um, the next step would probably be planning board participation. And ultimately, if, if there is an ordinance being presented to the council in the future, that, that would also be a public hearing. So there, there are some opportunities. I think the next one would be to, to, you know, watch for something at the planning board level. Because at this point, we're taking comments tonight. Those comments would be forwarded along with, along with our advisory opinion. I, I could be wrong, but Gary, does that sound correct? Unmuted.
Unmute. Yeah, that sounds correct. If we, um, if we go down the road of crafting an ordinance, I, I'd like to weigh in, if I may. I don't want to take any time away from any of the other, uh, participants, but I'd like to weigh in, if I may. I think that, um, that we should redirect this effort to producing a very robust, um, policy, complete streets policy. It's not binding, certainly, but a policy, crafting a complete streets policy allows us to do the kind of language tweaking that Mr. Casman was talking about. It allows us to build a very dedicated, robust, um, commitment to doing it. And, and by, and by the same token, building public support. I think that, um, I, I would re, I would restate the statement, if you build it, they will come, to if you build a robust commitment, public commitment to, um, the complete streets policy, then funding will come. And that this allows for, crafting a complete streets policy allows for the prioritizing and the morphing that Ms. Abbott was talking about. It, it gives us time to, to figure out what our other regulations need to be, um, changed. It gives us a lot of, it gives us time for the testing and evaluation that CJ was talking about. It, it allows us to develop, you know, put together a, an advisory committee of citizens and it allows us to build a set of standards that Kevin, that the chairman was talking about. And so I, I think that rather than us trying to take the time to, to build a rather narrow and well-defined ordinance that, um, that comes right out of the box and requires us by law to do certain things, that we, that we develop a policy. The CJ gave us a very good example of a policy from Madison, Connecticut. And there are a great many others that, that, that we can build from that I think ultimately, that, that policy statement certainly could become a ordinance once we get our ducks in a row, for, for lack of a better phrase. And that, working on a, building a complete streets policy, um, it is a better way to go from my professional point of view.
Thank you, Mr. Bobby.
Um.
Mr. Stube? Yeah?
Um, well, I, I don't want to cut off. Is there one more question?
Mr. Woodhead.
First, I guess.
Yeah. Let me, let me just get to Rosemary first. I think Rosemary is more of a comment. Realistically, our problems are caused by cars that are just traveling from Portsmouth to get to Newport or Route 24 quickly, either on weekends or going to and from work. That's what needs addressing. Until then, no one is going to walk on a sidewalk. Cars are just being by with nowhere to go but on the sidewalk. Volume and speed are the problems. And I do not disagree with that statement. We have seen that even from our, our recent road safety audit, uh, speed is, is a problem. Speed and volume are a problem. So again, um, we, we do acknowledge that there are some problems. Some of those roads aren't, are really out of our control to some extent because they are state roads. What I believe we're trying to do here with the complete street ordinance or a complete street policy is to try to identify opportunities to enhance safety within the town-controlled roadways and right-of-way. And then that can also be incorporated into coordination with the other agencies, be it DOT or be it the British Turnpike Authority. So we, we still have, um, a lot of work to do, even if we have an ordinance or a policy. There's still follow-through that needs to occur. So thank you for that, that comment, Mrs. Stube.
Mr. President, just.
All right. Sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Stube, first.
Um, I, I just wanted to make a, a couple of comments in response to comments that have already been presented. Number one, um, I think that the, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, it feels like a major purpose of enacting an ordinance is that we can help hold the feet of the state to the fire. This ordinance, this whole ordinance thing is not aimed at making the town do something. If it is, it's, it's mainly, that's a very small portion of the purpose of passing an ordinance because our major problems are on state roads. And I've been led to believe that if we pass an ordinance, we will just have better success at forcing the state to do what they're already supposed to be doing. That's one. Number two, in terms of moving forward, um, we're trying to get a master plan for open space and recreation and it feels like we need a master plan for our transportation corridors. So I would recommend that we think about getting the community together, getting staff together, DPW, as well as planning and, and work to try to figure out how we can get a master transportation plan going. So those are my two comments. Thank you.
Can I comment? Can I just add to that? First of all, I agree with what Linda said. I think the goal of developing an ordinance goes beyond, um, what we're going to do here in the town, I think. And this, the resolution that we passed last year, I think, addressed this. But I think the goal of the ordinance is to give us, you know, more oomph, for lack of a better word, when trying to work together with Rideout to get the state roads to be, to improve complete streets. And yes, and that came out really bad, sorry. But complete, uh, improve the complete streets factor of our state roads because really, that really is where we have the majority of our issues. And to Rosemary's point, we're trying to work better with, with Rideout on that. So I think it's important for us to, let's take the time, let's develop an ordinance that fits our needs and let's pass, pass an ordinance. And I think the, the next step to that is to incorporate some of that language in our comprehensive plan as well because that will give us better standing when working with and negotiating with Rideout to, you know, encourage them and ask them to incorporate complete streets elements into our streets. And then, oh, regarding the master plan, Linda, we have a master plan. There was, um, in 2011, the Aquinic Island Planning Commission funded an entire Aquinic Island transportation study. And there's a lot of really great recommendations in there. We have a, a tradition of developing like elaborate plans and kind of stumbling on the executions. So I think we just need to be cautious of how we're going to turn this around into implementation and make sure we identify steps that we can actually implement in the near future rather than just focusing on the grand, big vision and then never really getting to it. I think if we can just break it down into, you know, actionable stuff that, you know, that Brian Woodhead can, can look at and incorporate into our existing projects and kind of, and take step by step, figure out how we weave this into our day-to-day operations rather, you know, it's not going to be some gigantic transformation of our entire town. It's just a, you know, a systematic, slow, thoughtful incorporation of these concepts into our, our policies and how we approach development and transportation planning and roadway projects.
Well, that plan was dated 2011 and I feel like we do need to update it, one. And two, um, if, if we did not have a capital, a rolling five-year capital improvement plan, then things would not get done properly. And that is all I'm proposing. That in, I'm not proposing a grand strategy, but a, like a rolling five to 10-year road improvement plan that's going to get executed, but first set out in a rolling plan. So that we, we can move from study to execution properly. But I think we agree, frankly. And I also think that, um, you know, Mr. Woodhead, I had a brief conversation with him. Obviously, he already has a plan of how he is going to be approaching maintaining our town roads. And what we don't want to do is to, I mean, he would incorporate the, some of the, the policies, but our goal is not to make him mess up this plan of fixing our roads. It's been done based on studies of what's required, right? So again, the major purpose of this exercise is to get the state roads in better shape and.
Yeah, but to also look at that existing road pavement program and really assess it and see if there's any places or if there's any room to incorporate complete streets improvements into that existing plan without like rewriting it and overhauling it and, you know, no, I don't think anybody wants to do that. But I think there are, there is probably room for improvement within any pre-existing plans or projects.
Well, it just feels like, Mr. President, that it should not be something that we live here and think, oh, now the planning department or the planning board's going to take care of everything. I really feel like we have to think about making sure that we can gather the community, that we can get a, a plan together that has community input because we would make sure the crazy things that have been done by DOT are not continuing to be done with being, having it be a thoughtful process. So I would recommend that we consider putting together, not, not a, perhaps not a committee that's going to meet every month for the next 10 years, but maybe just a big charrette or something where we can sit down and bang, you know, bang out ideas to move us to having a, a master plan of having a, a road improvement plan that's 10 years out, you know, that goes 10 years out, whatever. But that's just the big picture ideas.
I would suggest maybe, uh, you know, assembling an ad hoc committee that includes our DPW director, our town planner, maybe one or two representatives from the town council, maybe some representatives from some existing town committees, the planning board, and you come together to hash out the implementation plan so we can identify the, you know, the, what comes after the ordinance. Because it is more of a process and not.
I don't disagree.
Not a switch.
I don't disagree with any of your, your comments. I think we're getting away from the process, though. Right now, we're talking about, uh, we're, we're having a workshop on an ordinance. So we got to get that squared away first. We get, we got to get through that and establish, are we moving forward with the framework of an ordinance? And I think we need feedback from our planning board in order to understand how this ordinance will, will impact our development standards. I mean, the, the, the purpose of this complete street ordinance, I know you're talking about you want to address some issues with DOT, but DOT roadways are exempt from this ordinance. So we've got some issues, we've got, we've got different things that are at play here. I, I think we have to look at the complete street ordinance for how it affects our town roadways first, right? And we're trying to guide development and safety. That's, that's the reason of our ordinance. And I, I only brought up a, a set of suggestions for design standards because the, the information that Barry had mentioned was, was very helpful. If you have certain roadways, you may want to implement certain types of, of complete street development. There should be standards or templates that, that guide some of that development. That, that's all I'm talking about. I'm not saying we've got to, our planning board has to recreate the wheel. What I'm saying is that they should try to identify what, what works or what we think would be consistent for the town of Portsmouth. But that, that, those are just comments. But I, I mean, we're getting way ahead of ourselves here. What I think, you know, what I, what I think we need to do is just think about this ordinance too, as, as how it applies to the town and our town roadways and our citizens of the town of Portsmouth. Step one, how we deal with DOT is, is a separate issue. This may help with those discussions, absolutely. But I, you know, let's not, let's, let's stay to the course here of the ordinance and how it's going to affect our citizens. Mr. Hamilton? You have some, you got a comment? I know Brian has a comment, too.
I know. It was so long ago that I almost forgot it. So, um, my thought process is along the same lines as Mr. Crosby where we go with a policy rather than ordinance that forces the hand. I don't believe having an ordinance versus a policy is going to give us any more leverage over DOT. DOT is going to do what they do based on either ADA compliance or money. Those are their two big drivers. The reason we got new sidewalks on Bristol Ferry and on the northern part of East Main Road was blessed with ADA compliance and which is a different pot of money that DOT pulls from. You know, one of the roads that CJ showed was Sprague Street, which is in line to get sidewalks, thankfully. I walked that road this morning and it's not fun when people come flying up the hill. Or heck, buses coming around the corner off of the high school. I think we may, we need to take very careful and deliberate steps as we do this. I think there's some small changes that CJ brought up. You know, paint is relatively cheap. We could just go with some of those suggestions along Middle Road and just simply painting the bicycles thingies on the road to make people aware, more signage, that people do bike up and down that road. We need to look at, and I think one of the things we really should readdress is looking at the bicycle master plan in terms of whether it fits along the corridor or how we can do it along West Main Road, along the bike corridor, the railroad corridor, excuse me, whether or not that is feasible in the future. It's, it was a very expensive project in the past because of wetlands, all kinds of other fun stuff, but the 2011 plan was a good jumping off point, but a lot of things have happened in 10 years. And that really does need to be updated. And I would venture to guess that the volume of cars 10 years ago. And I would venture to guess that the volume of cars 10 years ago and now were a lot higher. So the biggest thing about this whole thing is it costs a lot of money if we're going to implement things 100%. If we look at doing incremental steps, signs, placards on the roads, things that can make people just slow down. I've walked a lot of roads in this town, and just getting people to slow down is the biggest thing we need to look at doing. But I would be more in favor of putting this forth as a policy. Again, as the president has mentioned, let's go through the processes, get it to the planning board, have their comments, because they can look and see how easily things can be implemented in new subdivision plans that we have going forth. And even suggesting to some of these developers, may just have them put complete streets in. I haven't done the research, but I'm assuming if somebody has a large complete street neighborhood, that maybe the value of the houses is more, because it is walkable, rideable, and safer.
Okay. Mr. Woodhead.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. A lot of great ideas thrown out there. I just have a few comments. I want to thank Gary and CJ for the presentation. I agree with Mr. Hamilton and Gary that I think this should be a policy and not an ordinance. That's just my opinion. And Mrs. Abbott, Ms. Abbott also, she already has a good vision already, and she has a good idea of, you know, we should come up with a list of roadways that we should implement this on, and I don't think it should be through the, on every street, because a lot like, even Mr. Ryan said, there's a couple of streets that only have four or five houses on them and we're not going to do, you know, sidewalks on. So I agree with Mrs. Abbott about we should come up with a list of roads and priorities that we should come up with, that we should implement a complete street. And then when we do implement, or when we come up with these roadways, then we should come up with the funding to fund this, separate from our paving program, because I don't want to see the paving program go down from where it is right now. I like to see it even go up even higher. So those are a few of my comments, and, you know, I do like to see that the ordinance that's written right now have a little more flexibility for public work, so we're not, like, have our hands tied every time it says shall, that, you know, we have to do it, or maybe you could put will or maybe into the policy. So those are just my kind of thoughts and comments. I mean, we can always rewrite this policy and wordsmith it like Mr. Katsman said, but I do think it should just be a policy. It shouldn't be an ordinance at this point. Thank you.
Okay, just, can I just clarify one point, just to make sure that I understand? A policy versus an ordinance, a policy would not be legally binding and an ordinance would be legally binding. If we're trying to adopt these, can't we just change the language in the ordinance so that it suits our needs and have a legally binding document that has more staying power? I think policies come and go with staff and councils and changes in priorities, and an ordinance has more staying power. And we have the time to craft the language and wordsmith the language so that we are happy with it. So I would advocate for us to proceed down the ordinance route, get an advisory opinion from the planning board, and then get more detailed red line commentary on the policy, on the ordinance language itself, because I don't think this is the time or place for, like, you know, kind of nitpicking the actual language. We will get to that. And then, you know, let's, let's take pride in passing a legally binding document that we worked on together and are all proud of and are going to be happy to see getting implemented in our town.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. We have another comment? Okay. Hold on. Okay, so Mrs. Davidson has another comment. This is a comment. I agree we have been put on the back burner as far as East Main Road goes. Plans are made, approved, councils and directors change, and nothing gets completely done. I think you need to put all your energy into advocating for East Main Road safety. We need another road on the island to accommodate the volume of traffic. I live in the Glen, walkers and bikers frequent the roads easily near me, but not East Main Understood.
We are trying, Rosemary. We are trying.
Mr. Katsman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo the sentiments of Ms. Abbott and Ms. Ujifusa. I support moving towards an ordinance. I think part of the reason why there's some record of trying to move forward on some things and then those things getting on the back burner is if they are not legally required, the priority of the days can end up overtaking, or people simply forget that there's a policy and since there's no enforcement, no requirement. So we're certainly not adopting anything tonight. I just support the idea of moving towards the direction of, through the steps, to get a, an ordinance that we can all support, that will yield positive results.
Thank you, Mr. Katsman. Okay. We have anything else? Am I missing any? More comment from Barry Cremoni? Okay, we have a comment from Barry Cremoni. The bicycle mobility, the bicycle mobility plan also prioritizes roads statewide, including several enforcement. It's all in the document. We can expect that those priorities will be reflected, be reflected in the tip going forward as state projects. Okay.
Yeah, I will echo that. I did review the bike mobility plan in the last week, and it clearly prioritizes both East Main Road and West Main Road for, you know, to kind of connect the bike transportation network across the state. And I think those probably are our most, you know, critical bottlenecks in terms of getting around in something other than a car.
Okay. Thank you for those comments.
Mr. President, can I just make one more quick comment about the complete street state law, which is not, it doesn't force them to do it, but it says they will consider complete streets designed in features that facilitate safe travel. It doesn't bind them into doing it, it just makes them consider it. I think our ordinance and/or policy should be along the same lines, that we have to consider it wherever we're doing rebuilds or taking care of our roads. But I don't think we should have something that's binding and tying the hands of our DPW staff and planning staff.
So I have two questions, I think, well, actually, a statement and a question. I think I agree with that, that point of view, Mr. Hamilton. I think if we could change the language to say it shall, it will consider all road users as long as we identify the process by which it'll be considered, and, you know, there's going to be an evaluation process that, you know, figures out whether boxes are being checked and whether the project, you know, is, you know, putting forward a best faith effort to try to incorporate as much of a complete streets factor as possible. So, you know, I think we can identify the process by which it'll be assessed and change, you know, have language that says we will attempt to incorporate complete streets and, you know, roadway projects. So I think that's part of the evolution of the language. But my other question is, do we need a motion as to whether we're going to proceed with an ordinance or a policy? I believe the resolution that we passed last year did request the development of an ordinance, so I think we can just proceed under that original resolution?
I think process-wise would be to put it on the next, the 28th agenda, to forward it to the planning board for their review and comment.
Is that when we would be giving forth our, you know, specific red line comments on the, on the ordinance?
No, no, no. That's when you just, you just give it to them to do that, too, and then they send it back to us with their comments, and then we, then Gary massages it, and then we massage it after Gary's done with it.
Why, Mr. Hamilton, why would it not go to the planning board after this evening? Because, for...
Because, well...
Because there's already been a resolution.
Yeah, I will, I will, because generally in a workshop, we don't have actions taken on a legal basis in terms of open meetings, so that it would go to the 28th meeting just to be safe, because it wasn't advertised that way. So just, we put it on the 28th as discussion and action of forwarding the information over. It's just CYA, that's all.
I think that's fine.
Okay, well, is it because it's not in the agenda for tonight?
It's not in as discussion and action to put it on there, yeah. It's just as a workshop. I think it's just, it's safer that way for us in terms of open meetings laws.
Well, I mean, I think that was our intent all along, was that it was going to get over to the planning board for their, for their feedback, and I think that would be important, because they're the body that controls the development in town, so.
Yeah. And I would add that we already had a resolution passed, so it seems like it should just happen tonight. It's not like we're doing something that we haven't already discussed the process before.
Well, we'll follow up on that, and if we can just move forward, we will. If we need to put it on for the 28th, we'll put it on for the 28th. We don't seem to have the definitive answer tonight, so I think, is Kevin Gavin available? Mr. Gavin?
I'm coming.
I mean...
My, is my...
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, I think it would be, I mean, this is obviously a, sort of at the conceptual level, and I think, I mean, and to the extent, this obviously involves, would involve amendments to the subdivision regulations, and that's in the purview of the planning board. So I think it would be, and then plus the open meetings issues that were mentioned, I think it's better not to go too far this evening and to send it to the planning board and get their viewpoints on this whole thing.
Yeah, can we do that tonight, or do we have to do that on the 28th? That we just want to get it to the planning board?
I don't see a problem with voting to ask the planning board for input.
Like, right now?
No, I don't see a problem with that.
All right, I would make a motion that we forward the draft ordinance to the planning board for an advisory opinion.
Second that motion. You're muted.
No, he's...
I'm not muted. I'm live. Yeah, you just said we could.
We can hear you.
As I'm saying, the workshop on this ordinance, I think, is broad enough to refer to the planning board to get further input, to further the discussion. That's all I'm saying.
So we have a motion in a second to refer this to the planning board for an advisory opinion.
Or comment. I mean, I don't know. I don't think, this was like a working draft of an ordinance.
Yes, correct.
Right, so we...
If I understand it correctly, it's not a final draft of an ordinance, asking where their advisory opinion to adopt or not. I think we're at a very preliminary stage, asking, asking the planning board to just provide input. That's how, I mean, that's how I see it.
So we should be asking the planning board for advisory input?
Review, review and comment on the working draft of this ordinance. I mean, I think that's, if I recall correctly, that was specifically what, how Gary characterized it as a working draft of an ordinance. I don't think this is, like, ready for adoption.
No.
Okay, but at least we will get the process started by getting, getting some feedback from the planning board, you know, identifying how this will, you know, what, what these, you know, what these changes may look like for development in town, standardizing some things, and getting their feedback for, for them, what, then, then a review by the council. So if we get, if we get feedback from them, what would, it's not invited, it's not, what would the next step be?
I guess, I guess what my feelings are, that, as I understood this, this was a, we're at the first stages of this process, and Gary put together a working draft, and we're not at the point of having a final draft of something to consider for adopting. So I don't, I don't think we're saying, sending this, we would be sending this to the planning board to review and to recommend yea or nay on adopting this ordinance, just to, just to get their input to move the process forward, and what their thoughts are and what their, you know, comments are on this whole concept. I mean, I can't, you know, the, obviously, it's the council's prerogative on how it wants to proceed, but that's how I understood where we, where we are at this point.
I think, I think that's right. I think the language of an advisory opinion is something very specific, and so...
Okay. Can I re, all right, I'll rephrase my motion. Can we send this to the planning board for their thoughts and comments on the draft ordinance? Yeah, review and comment from the planning board on the working draft of the ordinance.
That works for me. I think that's probably the way to go.
I will second that motion as amended.
Can I jump in for just a second? Are you, will you be tasking me with the responsibility of briefing the board and planning board and presenting this to them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we want continuity here, Gary, so that would be very helpful.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujifusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
I'm going to vote nay, just because I don't believe it's proper in this meeting to do this. No offense, Kevin.
Okay.
Mr. Katsman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
I think I'm going to vote nay for the same reason Keith did.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
And Mr. Aguirre?
I'll vote, yeah, I'm trusting our solicitor.
That's, that's what it boils down to.
That's why we pay him the boku bucks.
If it's not right, we'll, we'll know in the next day or two, and we'll see it on the 28th if we're wrong. So I mean, I, I think we should, you know, double check it, but let's...
Workshop's part of a process, you know, the AG does, Open Meetings Act things are all across the board, you know, and I can't see this being an Open Meetings Act violation. We had a workshop, and now we're advancing the ball forward. That's all, that's how I see it.
Okay, it's, we're not committing capital murder here, but just, we've been, we've been called on technicalities before.
And we will.
And we will again, right?
Thank you. All right. I think that concludes our workshop. Thank you all. CJ, thank you. Gary, thank you. To those of you that participated from home, thank you for participating. And councils, we'll continue to try to advance this forward and, and see what, see what we can make of it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujifusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Katsman?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, CJ.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.